Good evening. I'd like to call the regular committee meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge to lead is...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Foché.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine is not here tonight. Ms. Daisart?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Foché. I'd like to take a point of privilege at this time to wish our fellow board member, Mr. Joe Long, a happy birthday.
Well, happy birthday, Joe.
Happy birthday, Mr. Long.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
And many more.
Hopefully. You know, I tell my children all the time, grandchildren, enjoy every day and every moment because the years fly by so fast.
They do.
They sure do.
And every birthday's a good birthday because we're here, right?
That's right, that's right.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, happy birthday. Alrighty. First item on the agenda is an education item. Ms. White?
Thank you. Yes, we have 2.1, the consideration of St. Bernard Parish Public Schools to 2024 to 2025 pupil progression plan, and to present is Mrs. Corolla. Good evening. So you guys have this plan in your folder, and I just want to point out just a few things. This year, we have not gotten a lot of guidance from the state on it yet. It's not released. A lot of things were changed this year, and they told me they would release some more soon. So if they release that, we will make amendments if we need to. But if you want to take a look at it, there's a new template that was released. And the template, the print in black is the template that we have from the state. The part in blue is what we added to it. So the guidance from the state is in black. Very, very simple on page, just a few changes. On six, at the top, they added that third and fourth grade consideration. And they did add some considerations for third-grade readers. So as you probably know, we do a lot, a lot of reading and literacy screenings now to try to remediate people who are not reading yet, our students. So they did do some remediation on that. If you look at the bottom of page six, for promotion and mandatory retention in third-grade students, that was a change. Also, we've also had an IAIP plan for the last several years that addressed fourth graders going into fifth grade that did not make a basic or a basic on their LEAT test. So that's changed a little bit now. It's called the Extended Academic, Expanded Academic Improvement Plan. So that particular template hasn't been released yet, but that will go for third, fourth, and fifth graders. So that is something that principals and teachers will be working on, meeting with parents. We have a lot of parent meetings to do. Also, when a child goes on one of these plans, this is a bit of a change. Once they reach basic in that area, they could be relieved of that plan. Now, until they reach mastery, they have to stay on an academic improvement plan. Also, I'm just kind of pointing out a few changes. The grading policy, the state has released a uniform grading policy this year. So it is a 10-point scale, rather than districts had their own scales that they used. So that is a change. And also, they do talk about our summer programs. But last year, our guidance for what we do for our summer literacy program was released in April. So we're waiting for guidance on that also. And very little changed for grades six through 12. But so there was really no changes on that. Ms. Lametta read this and checked it out because she's the expert, of course, on those grades. So if you have any questions, if I can't answer them, I'll try to find out the answers for you as soon as I can for next time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Diana?
Thank you, Ms. Corolla, and welcome into your new position.
Thank you.
So the grading scale, you said that now we have to take the grading scale from the state, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it's a 10-point scale?
It's a 10-point scale. It's on page, it's a 10-point scale.
13.
Yeah, it's listed in it. Because it's actually, actually, it was never listed in the plan before, in the pupil progression plan and the guidance from them. So you had some discretion.
But we used this scale before, right?
We've used, not a 10-point scale.
No, just, okay. Because then it was a 92.
It was like 93 to 100.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Corolla.
Thank you.
Back to you, Diana.
We're gonna need a motion.
Oh, do we have anyone?
Make a motion for the vote?
I'll make a motion that we send the pupil progression plan for 24, 25 to the full board with a recommendation.
Okay, we have a recommendation from Sean. Anybody second it? Carly, second it. Please vote.
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you, Diana. Thank you, Ms. White. Okay, next item of personnel items. Ms. Foché?
Ms. Richard is here.
Oh, Ms. Richard is here. Hi, good evening.
Okay, you should have your meeting, your minutes from the last two weeks since our last school board meeting, the appointment of teachers and some support personnel. So we are still looking for certified ESL, certified ESL teachers who are bilingual. I've gotten applications for translators and interpreters, but I haven't seen any applications for those yet. So if you can get your feelers out there, that's one of the things we're really looking for, for our ESL population. Okay. And the next thing I have for you is what I call the big list. This is the staffing list for this year. It's up to date as of this minute. And of course, it could change the next minute, but I will update it throughout the year for you to keep you informed of our, this is our entire workforce.
Nice.
Okay?
Very good.
Okay, are there any questions at this time on personnel? Mr. Long?
I'm just curious, how many employees do we have now?
Oh, goodness. Over 1,000.
I'm sorry?
I'll get that number for you.
It's...
It's, we're talking about it.
It's usually in the high 900s, maybe 960, 970.
Okay.
Unless you went ahead and hired 30 more people.
I could have.
I don't know.
Been hiring a lot.
Yeah.
But I'll get that number.
So it's almost 1,000 people.
Yeah, it's almost 1,000.
So we're getting close to the pre-Katrina number, correct?
Somewhat. And a lot of that has to do with greater demands for different types of individuals that we've added. We've added mental health professionals, a lot more in line with social workers and counselors, those types of people. We've hired literacy coaches. You know, we've hired and lowered staffing ratios. So there are many areas that we have added to that we didn't have maybe in such quantity before Katrina.
But I'll get that number for you.
Thank you.
The next time I'll have it for you.
Are there any other questions at this time of personnel?
But we are the largest employer in St. Bernard Parish.
Yes, yes, I assume that.
By far.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Richard. Good job. Okay. Next item is an executive item. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mrs. Daisart. Item 4.1 is the appointment of a representative to the local ITEP committee.
And let me just make a few prefacing comments. We all know that with our last governor, there was an executive order which gave local entities more of a say-so in approving ITEPS, which are industrial tax exemption applications. And there were three entities in the parish, it was the school board, parish government, and the sheriff's department, that individually had the ability to approve or not approve a local ITEP application. And they could do it independently. One could approve, the other two might not approve, or however it would go in that point. With our new governor, he has issued, or he had issued an executive order in February, which we have gone through before, which changes that process. So those three local governmental bodies or entities do not have the ability to independently approve or not approve ITEP applications. The entire process is changing. There's going to be a local committee which will make a recommendation to the state. Will not have the authority to do it themselves, but can make a recommendation. And part of the executive order, which I have included for you in your packet, you know, outlines all the particular steps that have to be done. And in one section, they have asked at the state level for the local economic development people within the parish to take a bigger role in that and help coordinate that particular committee and the process. So I've asked tonight for Megan McCormick, who is our Economic Development Commission Executive Director, to come and make a presentation to you about the new process, their involvement in it, who will be on the committee, and how it will work. And she has supplied two pages for you of a short presentation that she's going to give and answer any questions that you may have. So Ms. McCormick, would you please?
Thank you so much for having me this evening. And the two-pager that she's referring to, it has the SBA for St. Bernard Economic Development Foundation logo on it. Should be in your packet printed for you. I won't take up too much of your time. I know you are somewhat familiar with the industrial tax exemption process. It's in the state constitution. It was created at the state level really to incentivize companies to put concrete in the ground. And so the idea there is that the higher the assessed value of a property, the high, you know, the more likely that company is to stay in the community. And so they wanted to incentivize, not necessarily jobs, but really companies building in Louisiana, companies putting a stake in the ground and making sure that the investment was something that's going to stay for a long time. Because they're, you know, as you're seeing now with the world today, a lot of people are working remotely. People are living these wonderful nomadic lives. And so the creation of ITEP even way back then was with the foresight that they wanted companies to have a real stake in communities. And so that part of the program has not changed. It is still an 80% tax exemption, meaning any local entity that says yes to an ITEP is saying yes to 20% upfront. And, you know, eventually, whether it be five years from then or 10 years from then, we'll get the full, the ideas of the assessed value of the property would then come on the tax rolls at 100%. The eligibility criteria, you have to be a manufacturing company. So if the company does not produce a product or service, they would not qualify for ITEP. You have to be a manufacturing company. So you have a specific NACs code that qualifies you as a manufacturer. That makes you eligible for ITEP. And the program can also be used for manufacturers that are new to Louisiana or actually making new investments at existing facilities. I will go over this presentation with a caveat, two caveats, actually. One, I am the messenger, and so I do not make the rules. That is way above my pay grade. But I am here to just kind of clarify any questions that you might have with my best understanding of the rules as they exist. The governor submitted an executive order on February 21st of this year, and now we're kind of going through the process as local economic developers. They have consultants involved in the process, as well as local communities who are going up to Baton Rouge and providing lots of public input and comments to the governor and Louisiana Economic Development and his administration on their thoughts on the process. So I'm here today not because these are necessarily rules that I created or wanted, but just because I want, I think the best thing that we can do for our community is make sure that everyone is informed and make sure that we are putting ourselves in a position where we have people who are making informed decisions about ITEP. The second caveat is that I'm not here to speak about a specific project or anything like that. That's also not really my place. But I'm here to just kind of let you know where the rules are, where they stand, and clarify any questions that you might have. So one of the first changes is the removal of the job requirement. I'll address that head-on. I know a lot of people, and rightfully so, are up in arms about that. Again, I did not make that rule, but ITEP was not created to be a jobs program. There are quality jobs programs, there's enterprise zone, there are other incentive programs at the state level created specifically for that purpose of creating jobs in Louisiana. ITEP, as I mentioned earlier, was formed in the state constitution to get concrete in the ground at first. Now, it's, you know, just to incentivize companies to build and plant a stake in communities. The second major change, as Ms. Foché mentioned earlier, is the establishment of a local committee. I think, and again, this is just Megan's editorial, but my impression is that the governor was trying to streamline the process. Because in every parish, and we have 64 in Louisiana, the process looked vastly different. So we had some parishes that really were making local decisions about ITEP and just leaving that in the hands of, let's say, the parish president. Other communities kind of already assembled their own version of a local committee. And then other communities were having companies meet directly, like we were in St. Bernard Parish, with the entire school board, the entire council, and the sheriff and his team. Here, now, the way that the governor has outlined this, each committee, or each community has the opportunity to establish a local committee at the parish level. The representatives on that local committee who have voting power would be, if you have a home rule charter, which St. Bernard does, the parish president, the sheriff, or their designee. And then it's up to the school board to elect a representative that can either be, as outlined by the governor, the superintendent of the school system or the school board president. So tonight, I know it's just up for introduction, I assume, for this committee. But you will have an opportunity to decide who you want your representative to be and then make a final vote in a couple of weeks. But the idea here, and this is coming from Louisiana Economic Development, not necessarily Megan McCormick, but the idea was that the feedback they got from companies was that in the past, they had to, they had to make three different financial projections. They had to make a financial projection for if all three entities unanimously said yes, we approve the industrial tax exemption at 80%, and that's one financial spreadsheet. They had to make another financial spreadsheet for if two of the three entities said yes. And then another one for if they didn't get the ITEP. And so it made, there was a lot of uncertainty for companies in that. Obviously, you're giving presentations three times at three different public meetings, which is a bit difficult and cumbersome on a company. And at the end of the day, I think one of the statements that the governor put out is that because this is outlined in the Louisiana constitution, he was worried that it was kind of a system where a company could apply in one parish, not get the ITEP, and then turn around and apply in another parish and get the ITEP because the processes were so vastly different in different communities. So I think here, the idea was that he just wanted to streamline it across all communities and make sure that the process was fair for communities that, for companies across the board. Another change is that in the past, as Ms. Foché mentioned, each entity, meaning the school board, the council, and the sheriff, had the opportunity to say yes or no independently. That has also changed, meaning now, the process is that if two of the three, via their representative, say yes, a yes is sent to the state level. If two out of the three say no, a no is sent to the state level. And then that local input is considered by the Louisiana Board of Commerce and Industry, which approves the contract and then sends it to Louisiana Economic Development, which is the state's Department of Economic Development, to then execute on the contract with the company. Are there any questions about that? I know that's a little bit confusing. And then, I know this is not something that, again, it's not my decision, but I just want to make you all aware, the decisions are not, do not, the decisions by the local committee also no longer bind the governor or the Louisiana Board of Commerce and Industry to a certain decision. Meaning, if the local committee says no, and the governor looks at it and the company technically meets all of the requirements of being a manufacturer, meeting the requirements set out in the executive order for an industrial tax exemption, the governor can then execute a contract with the company. And so from there, the process would basically look like a situation where, at first, the company has to file an advance notification to submit an ITEP application and let the community know that they're going to be applying for an industrial tax exemption. From there, the local committee will receive notification of that. Following that, they'll be invited to complete the application through a system that Louisiana Economic Development has created. That will then be reviewed by Louisiana Economic Development to, again, make sure they meet their criteria. They can then enter into an agreement with LED, basically saying that we're going to start really doing our due diligence to review this. From there, the Board of Commerce and Industry will consider the application at one of their meetings. And then if the Board of Commerce and Industry approves, local committees will be able to give input. One of the, there's a lot of commentary right now at the state level about local committees giving input after the Board of Commerce at the state level has already approved the application. There are requests coming from local communities saying, we would like our input to be provided first, which personally I agree with, but again, do not make the rules. And then from there, the project completion report will have to be submitted, and the governor or Louisiana Economic Development can enter into a contract for the industrial tax exemption. Following that, five years later, the company will have to show what they did, you know, the investments they made, the expenditures and all of that, and submit an annual, a report to Louisiana Economic Development in addition to the annual report that they already provide. So those are the key changes. There are also a lot of things that didn't change that I did mention on the second page here, just about the fact that contracts do still have to meet the definition of being a manufacturing establishment. There is an entire section in the application about commitment to the community and how you're going to make an investment in the community, not just for your company. There is additional information that the Louisiana Department of Revenue typically requires of these companies, including the jobs that they create, despite any rule that the governor will outline in his executive order. And right now, the governor is only able to approve contracts of 80%. He is not able to approve anything more than that. So with an exemption of 80%, he's not able to approve any more of that. So with that, I'll invite you all to ask any questions or make any comments. I know this is kind of a lot, there are a lot of, you know, significant changes that can be expected with a new administration. And so my goal is really just to make you, make sure that you're all informed. I met actually with Superintendent Foché and Mr. Fernandez a few weeks ago just to let them know that while I cannot change the rules and while I cannot make the rules, my goal is to make sure that we at least have our entire local committee assembled in St. Bernard Parish so that we can provide that input, whether it's, you know, extremely effective or fruitless. I just want to make sure that our voice is heard. I want to make sure that we have our ducks in a row. That's my job. And so we're navigating this process together, but I just want to make you aware of all the, the, you know, make you aware of the process, first and foremost, the eligibility requirements, and kind of where the conversations stand with the executive order. And I also invite you all, if you have feedback that you'd like me to provide, I've been attending the meetings in Baton Rouge as well. I can and would be happy to submit any feedback or comments on your behalf. So you're also invited to do that directly as well.
Any questions for anybody on the board? Mrs. Daisart?
So basically, the governor has the final say-so.
So whatever the committees locally decide, the governors can overrule, correct?
He may.
Okay. So even though it says, it's, you know, they're looking for our input, no matter what the local entities decide, the governor has the final say?
Yes.
Bottom line, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I will say, and Superintendent Foché highlighted this earlier, but the state is asking that the local economic development organizations take more of a role in coordinating the meetings of the local committee. The local committee will be required to host a public meeting so that community members, residents, school board members, council members, who are no longer formally a part of the local committee, can provide input. I encourage you all to do so. And I also, you know, in my role, you know, the new role that they're creating for economic development organizations in this process, I'll make sure that if there is more feedback than just a simple thumbs up or thumbs down, I'm going to do my very best to make sure that all of that feedback is amalgamated and put together and sent onto the state level.
Okay.
For what that's worth.
We thank you for the information. So what you're saying is whoever's on the committee, the president of parish, the sheriff, and whoever we decide to appoint to the committee will have to hold public meetings along with you for the public, correct?
It will.
To give the public input?
Mm-hmm.
At what time will that have to be?
The timeframe is, so the company, let's just say, Company A will submit an advance notice saying, I intend to apply for an industrial tax exemption. From there, Louisiana Economic Development, the state, then they'll submit that application with the state. From that there, the state will have three days to send me and the three members of the, the three voting members of the local committee notice that there is an intent to apply for an industrial tax exemption. After those three days, or really, once I receive that notice, it's my job to make sure that within 15 days, the local committee has set a date for a public meeting. They only are required to hold one post-public meeting, and that date has to fall within 45 days of that notice. So if that's confusing, it's also outlined here as well on the sheet. But basically, I'll receive notice within three days that they, the company intends to apply for an ITEP. And then within 45 days, that local committee has to hold a public meeting for any community member, resident, anyone that wants to provide input. And then that's the meeting where they'll pass a resolution stating whether or not they approve or do not approve of the industrial tax exemption. The two, I should mention also, the two non-voting members of the local committee will be myself as the highest, and this is how they outline it in the executive order, but the highest-ranking economic development professional in the parish, as well as the assessor, who has information on the company, their tax rolls, you know, what they contribute to the school board, the sheriff, and the council or parish.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jackson?
So since the executive order has changed in February, have, has there been any ITEP applications that have already gone through the process? Do we have any idea on whether or not the governor's final decision has been aligned with the local committee?
Yes, so there have been plenty of applications. I imagine you're talking about the state level, not St. Bernard Parish. At the state level, there have been a number. I know at the, I attended a meeting in Baton Rouge yesterday, and five applications had been approved at that meeting alone, and so...
And are those decisions aligned with what the local committee? I'm just curious on what, you know, how that's playing out, whether or not they're actually taking into consideration what the local entities are asking them to do?
I can get you that information. Because they weren't in St. Bernard Parish, I didn't, you know, go, I don't have access to the packet that all of the Board of Commerce and Industry board members were looking at or what the local input was in those scenarios, since they weren't in St. Bernard Parish. But I can tell you, another opportunity is when the Board of Commerce and Industry meets, that's a public meeting as well. And so they did not have any public comment from community members on those applications, and it seemed like a pretty seamless process. But I also, but I do know that, I can tell you, there was one meeting I attended that was four hours because community members were really questioning whether or not it even qualified for ITEP. It was a solar project, and they weren't sure if that qualified as manufacturing, since there's not a product that is sold to, I mean, there is, but there was a lot of debate around that. And so I can get you that information if...
Yeah, I'd just be curious for my own information.
That's a good question.
How that's playing out.
Any other questions?
I will say, just when we went through this process two years ago, and I just thought of this. But I do know that we did a study with a consulting firm at the time. This was in 2021, when Shawman of Refining received approval for their ITEP. All of, in that case, there were, there was the map, actually, I don't know if you remember, at their open house. And on that map, it specifically spoke to local approvals, not necessarily state approvals of ITEP applications. And on that map, there was a very considerable number of parishes that unanimously, and I'm talking about at the local level unanimously, you know, give a green light to ITEP applications. So even if the number ends up, I'll do the research, but even if the number ends up being low, it could also just be that the local communities are really excited about the companies applying for ITEP. the companies applying for ITAP and say yes unanimously. And, yeah.
You know, like, you should be listening to, you know, what we want to do with our national.
Of course.
And is our input actually going to have an impact on what's on the carry?
Mrs. Boche?
Yeah. Mr. Fernandez and I met with Ms. McCormick and outlined all of the, I guess, a little worrisome behaviors or criteria set up in this executive order, and as she has said, you know, she didn't make the rules for this. But one thing that, and I think when they had input yesterday at the state level, one of the big issues too, is these applications are sent to the Board of Commerce and Industry initially, and they approve it, then send it to the local committee for a recommendation, which seems to be a very cumbersome and backwards process. So, they do the initial approval, I think just based upon very cold criteria. You know, does it meet that, this, this step, this step, this step? And now, we'll send it to the locals and see what you have to say and what recommendation that you may make. That, to me, is a very difficult way, and really kind of, not a very inclusive way to actually conduct this particular process. I know that we've had a big problem with the job development piece of this, or the economic development of the community in which the business resides, as opposed to the metro New Orleans area. So, we wanted to see figures and such from entities who are thinking about applying for these things, of how it would impact specifically St. Bernard Parish, not the metro New Orleans area and other parishes as a whole, if it's going to be located here. So, there are many kinds of considerations that we, or concerns that we raise, that we've asked Megan to go ahead and make known at the meetings that she's attending concerning this whole process.
I will say, one change that they thankfully did make was, initially, they were only going to supply notice to the economic development professional about the company applying for advance notice. Superintendent Boche brought that to my attention, and she said, "I want to know directly. I don't want to have to wait for you to get an email within three business days, and then wait for you to have to email me and notify me, and then have me, and then I have to send it to my full board." Yeah, exactly. So, one change that they did make is they at least have now agreed to send direct notification, not just to the economic development professional, who's a non-voting member on the board and representative, but also to all of the members of, all of the representatives of each local committee in each parish. And so, that is, is one change that has been made. I've also made the suggestion about, you know, basically taking step eight in the process and moving that to step six in the process, surrounding the decision and input of the local committee, and moving that earlier in the process. So, instead of it being essentially approved by the state, and then after the fact, asking the local committee for approval, that has not changed yet, but I do, you know, the feedback is being heard, it's being listened to. They seem to be giving ample time to anyone who wants to offer public comment, and are really taking these things into consideration, at least at the, I can't speak for Louisiana Economic Development, but at least the Board of Commerce and Industry, who are elected people, just like you, and appointed people who seem to want to do what's right by the community.
Are they considering modifying this at all, when you said they're still listening to public input?
They are.
But they are also taking applications as we speak. So, if an application is approved, say, this month, then this process will remain in effect unless it is amended prior to that, correct? Like, changed or considered?
So, it depends on when you filed advance notification as a company. If you file advance notification today, and these are the rules today, then these are the rules that will apply to you throughout the entire process.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, I think that's causing a lot of...
So, you don't know when they are considering, since they held a public hearing yesterday, where people gave all this comment?
Yes.
Do you know when they will make a decision to consider some of the concerns raised yesterday?
Yes, their next meeting is on September 23rd. I wrote it down at yesterday's meeting.
It's not August 28?
That's their regular board meeting, but that's not the committee that is making the decisions on the rules, the promulgation of the rules.
So, it won't be until September that they'll consider amending this process in any way, correct?
Yes. So, the, the meeting that you probably saw that was announced, is just their regularly scheduled meeting, where they follow up on companies that have either already been approved or are applying. The special meetings that they're hosting are, I think they're just deciding each date at the, the meeting, at the end of each meeting.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, do you know of anybody that is about to submit an advance notification?
No.
We don't have anybody in the pipeline yet that's looking to take advantage of this?
Chalmers Refining, I believe, has submitted an advance notification.
Oh, they have, okay.
But I don't know anyone else that is about to submit another one.
I didn't know, I didn't know anybody's in it.
Right, and we've met with some representatives from Chalmers Refining, and they've told us they, they have submitted something that I think is going to be heard at the August 28th meeting
Yeah.
of the Business and Industry, Commerce and Industry Commission.
They'll be going off of these rules.
Yeah, so they're, yeah. And that, that's also why I wanted to make sure the school board had this on the agenda, so that by the time that they submit advance notification, again, I'll be notified within three days that they have submitted that, and as well as the representatives on the local committee. From there, we'll have 15 days to pick a date for that public meeting, and then that public meeting will have to be held within 30 days of, you know, that 15-day period. So, basically, we'll have 45 days.
And that's why at the next, you know, at the regular board meeting, that that appointment of our representative needs to be made this month.
Yeah, we'll just table that and make that decision at the, at our later meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
And in some, yeah, in some communities, they were already essentially following this process already, so it was easier for them to assemble a local committee. We weren't necessarily doing that for prior ITAP applications, so I wanted to make sure we got our ducks in a row. So, if an advance notification is filed, we're immediately ready to hold a public meeting and start considering it in a, in a way that makes sense and is a logical process.
All right, so no action on that. We'll move on to item 4.2.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Do you, do you need a motion to move this to the regular board meeting with no recommendation at this time?
We can, yeah, that's fine. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I'll make that motion that we send this to the full board with, to be considered at that time.
I have a second.
Second, that motion.
Second, by Ms. Harris. First, on Mrs. Daisart. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
All right. Item 4.2, consideration of a cooperative endeavor agreement between St. Bernard Parish Government and St. Bernard Parish School Board.
Okay, the, oh, I guess a few meetings ago, parish government had asked us to go into a cooperative endeavor agreement with them over the usage of some of their facilities, when we used the Civic Center for our opening of school event, or any other time we would use it. When we first took a look at it, we felt that the agreement was too broad in nature, and I wanted to make sure that it was narrowly focused to address specifically the issues we needed to address now. Parish government is a little bit under the gun in terms of making sure that they have all their cooperative endeavor agreements in line for the usage of the facilities. We use the, we as a school system, use the Civic Center only twice a year. We do it at the, in August for our opening ceremony, which we did last week, where we got all of our employees together, we used it for a couple of hours that morning, where we welcomed everyone back for a new school year. The second event that we use the Civic Center for is for the eighth grade graduations, which we do in one day, and we do all three of the middle schools together. Those are the only two times during the year that we use their facilities. The high school uses one of their facilities for the homecoming dance, to keep that locally here within the parish. So, what we did at this time was, when you do these cooperative endeavor agreements by law, each entity has to experience something of somewhat equal value. It can't be that one entity gets something disproportionately, say, larger than the other. So, what I did with this one is I met with the parish attorney and narrowed the focus of the agreement. So, what we are proposing to do is to have parish government to allow us to use the Civic Center on those two occasions, the Val Reese Complex for the homecoming dance, that would be three times in the year. And then, if there is any other school system-wide activity that we would like to use the facility for, either one of those two facilities, that the parish president and I would have that discussion and make that agreement. And as you can see, we have the obligations of parish government, that we would use it those three times a year, work out any other time that the school system would, as a district-wide function, use it. And they would waive the rental fees, that we would still be responsible for the cleanup or any security measures that would be taken at our events. And in exchange for that, the Arabi Elementary Gym, which we have an agreement that they are currently using it, that we would make the Arabi Elementary Gym available for their volleyball and basketball activities after 5:30 PM in the evening, as they do now, and on a weekend, if they would have a volleyball or a basketball tournament for parish recreation. And we would waive any, we never did charge them, but we would waive any fees for using the Arabi Elementary Gym, and they would be responsible for cleaning after themselves, so that it would be ready for the kids to come back the next morning. So, it's not a change in, on anything that we're currently doing, it's just putting it into a written agreement. There are many other usages that we have, that the parish uses our facilities for, but they are under other agreements. Some of the other gyms that they utilize go back, we have lease agreements that go back 50 years, in the 1970s and the 1980s, that are currently in effect for some of those other elementary gym usages. And of course, you know, the, they use our facilities for all the elections, and they use the library right now as a shared usage, and as they're building their new one, and they'll be vacating that within the next year or so. But anyway, this narrow, this agreement, I think, is, is a good one, in that it satisfies their need to put it in writing, to comply with the state law, and it narrows that agreement to very specific times and events in just those two facilities.
Any questions from any board members? Mrs. Daisart?
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Can you outline the other gyms that we have a cooperative endeavor agreement with, that they use for recreation, please?
Okay, we, we don't have a real cooperative endeavor agreement. We have a lease and land usage agreement, that when I researched these, it goes back to the 1970s and 80s. These were 50-year leases and more. At that time, the school system owned a lot of land, where we had all of our facilities built. The parish government did not own as much land as we did, and had a need to expand recreational facilities, to build gymnasiums. So, the agreement that leaders made years ago was that, at many of our elementary school sites, that we would lease them the land, they would then build a gymnasium on that land for a shared usage, where the school system would use it during the day, and the recreation department would have use of it in the evenings and on weekends. And those agreements are covered, we had, well, a little bit later than the 70s and 80s, not too long ago, I don't know, Mr. Campbell, and Mrs. Daisart, and Mr. Long, so y'all remember when we built the, at the old Sebastian Roy School, we, parish came on and built a gym there, where we had that agreement. The school used it during the day, parish government, recreation, used it at night and weekends. So, that was at Sebastian Roy. The Cypress Gardens Gym, that sits on the Davies property, was another one. The gym right here on the side of the school board office, the Paul Noel Gym, because if you remember, this used to be the old Merrill Elementary School. So, we had that agreement with them. The old Goche Gym, that sits there now, that we don't have a school there, at this point, an active school, we have a building, but that gym was in that usage agreement as well.
And they're still using that, right?
And, yeah, parish government is still using that. So, a great many of those elementary gyms, we had in that way. Now, at some point, those leases will come up within the next couple of years or so, and then we're going to have to make a decision as to how we proceed from that point on. But those are already underwritten agreements. Schools that used to be middle and high schools, we did not have those agreements on, because we owned those particular gyms ourselves, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody?
And then, we did a thing with the library. The library, if you remember, right after the storm, Rebel Park is where the girls' softball field is now, and the St. Bernard Health Unit was behind the Olacost Elementary School, where the Ninth Grade Academy is. And we did a big swap at that time, where we took possession of Rebel Park and the Health Unit, and swapped with the parish government land around the old courthouse down the road. We did all of that at that point, and they're using the part of the Ninth Grade Academy for their library until they build their new one. And we have not really charged them for utilities or anything. It's not only just rent-free, they don't contribute at all for any operating costs for the library at this time. But they're building a nice, brand-new library for the parish, and hopefully, once that's done, then we will have a renovation plan in effect to take that part and make that a part of the Ninth Grade Academy there as well. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Boche.
Anybody else have any other questions? Mr. Campbell?
I move that we approve and send to the full board the cooperative endeavor agreement between the parish government and the school board.
Have a motion by Mr. Campbell. Do I have a second? Mr. Rodriguez? All in favor? Cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
All right, moving right along. Mr. Morales, we have 4.3. You are the keeper of the policies today.
Yes, sir.
I see.
Good afternoon.
Quite a few of these that we have to run through.
Yes, sir.
So, let's get it going. So, 4.3, consideration of adopting revisions of school board policy EB.
Yes, sir. So, if, if you look at the first three, just, I might go over them individually, but if you look at the first three, they're all dealing with Act 352. And you'll see, as we go through these, that they actually are just changing a few little things in each policy to deal with marijuana use. So, I'm going to go over those now. But at 4.3, EB, Buildings and Grounds Management, which is an updated policy, which was already in place, and just so you know, in, in your packet of information for everyone, there is the old policy, the revised policy, and the new policy altogether in that packet that we have provided for you. But in EB, it states in Act 352, revised Louisiana Statute 17240, "to include prohibition of use of marijuana in any form, on or in all school board property and vehicles, and at all school-sponsored or school-approved functions." So, again, in the first one, it's dealing with school property. That is EB, Buildings and Ground Management.
I think that makes sense to me. Anybody have any questions on that one?
Do you want to vote on these individually?
Yeah, we're going to have to, I think we'd usually take them individually. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we accept the policy change for 4.3.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mrs. Daisart, a second by Mrs. White. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay.
In the second, which is 4.4, GAMA, is employee smoking, tobacco, and marijuana use. Again, it's an updated policy based on Act 352. Act 352 revised Louisiana... Act 352 Revised Louisiana Statute 17240, "to include prohibition of use of marijuana in any form by all school board employees, on or in all school board property and vehicles, and at all school-sponsored or school-approved functions." So again, it changes it from the property now to talk about employees.
Any questions from any board members?
I'll make a motion that we accept the stated policy changes to four points.
Have a motion by Mrs. Jackson. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Campbell. Yeah, it's kind of hard to believe that.
It wasn't already there, yes, sir.
Wow, okay. All right.
It's also hard to believe that you actually have to, I mean, it's a legal subject.
Sure. I know.
Yeah.
You're right. It's hard to believe that we should put it in a policy.
Right, sure.
You have to like pick every fentanyl, not all of them? Is it a legal subject?
And then, I'm sorry.
Please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Then last but not least, as far as Act 352 is concerned, is 4.5, JCDAA, Student Smoking, Tobacco, and Marijuana Use. So Act 352 Revised Louisiana Statute 17240, "to include prohibition of use of marijuana by students in any form on or in school board property and vehicles at a school-sponsored or school-approved function."
Any questions?
And a lot of this is repetitive, because you're gonna see the same language when we have all the discipline policies and such. But since that law was passed, you know, the consulting group is just recommending that we add it to these particular policies as well, so.
Motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve on JCDAA.
A motion by Mrs. White. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Jackson. Please vote, cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
So the next three, 4.6, 4.7, and 4.8, all are dealing with Act 715, which has to do with home-study students and their eligibility in certain aspects. So we'll go over those now. 4.6, IDCH, is the home-study program policy. It is based on Act 715. So Act 715 requires school boards to allow participation by home-study students in extracurricular and interscholastic athletics, as long as they live in the attendance zone of the public school and meet and maintain all requirements for participation. So again, if you'd like to see what was revised in the policy, it is located in the packets that were provided.
Questions?
I have a question.
Mrs. Daisart.
What about the extracurricular activities? Does that include sports?
Yes, ma'am.
And is that going to be approved by the LHSAA?
There are requirements that Ms. Voche and I looked at in the LHSAA handbook, and we included a line in there that states that they have to meet those requirements as well.
Okay.
In the past, the LHSAA had already allowed it to be a local decision whether or not home-school students could participate in interscholastic sports in the schools in which they're zoned for. Years ago, St. Bernard Parish, we decided not to do that. So we did not allow children who were home-schooled to participate on LHSAA sanctioned teams. This law now changes that and mandates that that allowance be made. So the LHSAA handbook, they've, they already have eligibility requirements, application deadlines and such that need to be followed. So a student can apply, they have to meet certain eligibility requirements, they have to do it within a certain time period at the beginning of the school year for approval, and they have to meet all of the conditions that we set forth for participation. They would not be coming during the school day at any time for any kind of activity. It would just be, you know, would be after-school activities, or events, meets, games, such.
I ask that question because I know Louisiana High School Athletic Association was very specific in a lot of their rules, so I wanted to make sure that that was going to apply.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Daisart. Mrs. Harris?
So I have a couple of questions. So I get that they aren't going to be scheduled to come during the normal day, but I think about like two a days for football, and they come in the morning. So did they come in the morning for football practice, and then come back in the afternoon, and then?
Well, they usually do that, like, if we have, like, summer powerlifting or those kinds of activities during the school day. You know, we start school at 7:30, so we don't have a morning workout, or we don't have during school hours. They don't have football practice during school hours. It only is after-school.
And then what about transportation? Do we need to have them sign something, so let's say they make the football team, and we are going to, you know, coming to play? Is there some sort of waiver that they need to sign? They're not one of our students. Our insurance covers our students. Do we have to have insurance coverage for them? Do we have to have them sign a waiver?
They would be part of the sanctioned football team that we have, so they would be covered by our insurance as long as they are traveling with the team itself.
And on that same note, so we require our athletes to take part in the insurance program. We would require them also to take part in that?
Absolutely.
And that would have to be known to them prior to that year of participation, correct?
Right. They would have to follow all the same rules and regulations that our students would have to follow as well. Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Is one of the, they're being, is home-taught, is one of the requirements to play sports, do they take a test and have to pass tests?
They would have to.
To make a certain grade?
They would have to provide, they are, if they're in an approved home-school program, what is supposed to happen is that they actually are studying those particular courses. Now, who their teachers are, what curriculum they choose, up to their parents. So they would have to provide to us, we would ask them, what are your grades for this semester? What are, you know, for the nine weeks? And whatever we're presented, we have to accept, because we do not legislate or oversee the academic progress of a home-school student. So we would have to accept from their parents what their academic records are.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That is?
It is.
So, it says, "attendance zone of the public school and meet and maintain all the requirements." The requirement set forth by whom?
In the policy and LHSAA, yes, sir. In our policy and by the state athletic association.
But our policy not when it comes to grades and attendance.
They would have to meet the grades. But the grades are submitted by the people who are educating them, whether it be their parents, whether they do, they have certain software programs that they subscribe to, whether they have a small group that they educate together. But the home-school rules and regulations of the state are very lax. You know, it has direct parental control, to be perfectly honest. So we will have to accept from the parents what they provide to us. We have to say, you must show us evidence that they have taken and passed a certain number of courses.
So they have to identify that they're home-school, and they want to participate before the school year? So like baseball seasons in the spring?
Actually, the LHSAA designates in their handbook that, within the first 11 days of the school year, they must declare to the school that they wish to participate in one of the sports that occurred during the school year.
Okay.
That's straight out of their handbook.
So you have 11 days to?
That's, that's what we've read in the handbook. That's what it is right now.
That is what it says in the 2425 LHSAA handbook.
Motion.
So, what about incoming, first-time freshmen? Who have, they, I mean, they have eighth-grade scores from somewhere, but what if their eighth-grade scores are from, I mean, just thinking of home-school piece, but they did little school at a traditional school, and they're doing home-school for high school? You can just take their eighth-grade academics. It doesn't matter that they weren't in home-school last year.
Doesn't matter, right. As long as they were promoted, the beginning of the year, as long as they were promoted from the prior year to the current year, they're eligible. Then while the sport is going on, and while the semester is going on, they have to maintain certain grades and then earn certain credits to qualify for that next nine-week period, and the next nine-week period, and the next nine-week period.
And it would also deal with, like, plays and dancing and?
Part of that, part of that is in the next two as well.
Right.
Are you finished, Mrs. Harris?
Yes. So just for clarity, Ms. Voche, so basically, the home-school students were accepting their information as far as grades testing on the honor system. Their parents are giving it to us, and we accept it. So the only thing St. Bernard's school system has to really be responsible for is them as an athlete, them as a dance team, and making sure that they're here for that and they're abiding by those rules. We don't abide by, we don't have anything to do with them academically, but the paperwork is in line, and they can do whatever.
And then they have to meet all of our behavioral standards and discipline issues and conduct issues and?
And that would be like mainly when they're in our care.
When they're with us, yes.
Yes, okay, all right.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Rodriguez. So we have someone that checks on that, or they have to voluntarily give us that information?
Their academic information?
Yeah.
We have to get it from them prior to allowing them to participate. When we have our own students, then we have to verify all of that for our own. But they coming in will have to present it to us, and we have to accept it, we have to check to see if it's in compliance with LHSAA eligibility regulations, and then we say, okay, now you can come try out. Doesn't mean you get to play or make the team, but you are allowed to try out.
So they have to take the initiative to get the ball rolling?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so very much.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the policy changes to IDCH and send it to the full board.
Have a motion by Mrs. Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Rodney. Cast your votes.
Okay, motion, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 4, 1 opposed, 1 abstention. So 6-4. Mr. Campbell opposed, and Ms. Harris abstains.
The next one is IDE, and I want to just clarify too, that IDE and IDFA, which are the next two, have the same language where you see the little summaries. It's because what they did was take the information and just apply it to three separate policies, okay? So I can read it for you again if you'd like, but it's basically just saying that we cannot, as by law, cannot have these students not be able to participate in any interscholastic or extracurricular activities. So that's both 4.7, IDE, co-curricular activities and extracurricular activities, and 4.8, IDFA, interscholastic athletics. It's using a lot of the same language in all three policies.
And what Mr. Morales has for you two is, you have the copy of the law behind here.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so after all three of them in each section, if it's dealing with Act 715, at the end of those three policies, you'll see the actual law that applies.
Yeah. So you can see the copy of the law, which really doesn't give us a choice. And again, if it is a team, sport, or activity, it is permission to try out. It is not a guarantee of making the team or making the activity, but they would have the opportunity to try out for the team or the activity.
Okay, any questions on 4.7?
I do have a question.
Mrs. Harris?
There's a redaction of a list of under extracurricular activities where certain, and may include such activities as incoming pre-8s. Why did you redact that?
Because when our definition, you know, we had put on some activities as we looked at those, some of those are co-curricular as opposed to extracurricular. So the, we look at a co-curricular activity as something that is primarily happening within the school day, that is an extension of one of our academic programs. So if a kid's going on a field trip, say to the planetarium, they're doing it in conjunction with a science lesson. Or what we have had our teachers do, if they're going, for example, then to the zoo, they have to construct a lesson around one of the subject areas that they're having. If we're having an assembly in our school, that's not an, that's really not an extracurricular activity. Any of those school activities, it is an extension of what we're doing in the classes or at the school. So we're trying in the policy to make the distinction, because the law addresses extracurricular activities, and we're defining those as things that are happening outside of the regular school day, not during the school day itself.
And so home-school students would not be allowed to participate in those particular activities?
That is correct.
Any other questions? I have a question. I just don't understand why IDCH, I get, but IDE and IDFA, it's the same language, so why do we have to adopt that?
So each policy is dealing with certain things. So like, the first one's home-study program. So it's just telling us we cannot discriminate against home-study students. The second one is saying we can allow them to participate in co-curricular and extracurricular activities, which don't necessar-
Extracurricular, not co-curricular.
Yes, man, extracurricular activities. The third is dealing specifically with athletics. So it's just trying to cover all three. The company that we have just wants to make sure we're trying to cover all of our bases in when we add to policy, or redact from policy.
Many of our policies overlap, as you can see, because you may have the initial policy, and it says cross-reference, and it has other policies that are similar or may have some connection to it.
Okay.
You know how that is, if you make, if you read any governmental manual, whatever, you've got 68,000 pages or something that you might have been able to say in 10, you know.
Okay. Any other questions on 4.7? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the policy changes to policy IDCH and send it to the full board. I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jackson, a second by Mrs. Daisart. Please cast your vote.
One, two, three, four, five, seven, yes votes. Mr. Campbell against, and Ms. Harris abstaining.
And then the last, dealing with Act 715, is 4.8, IDFA, interscholastic athletics, which again is a lot of what we've already talked about in the first two.
Any questions on 4.8? Motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the policy changes to the IDFA and send it to the full board.
Do I have a second? Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Warner, can I just?
Yeah.
And I know none of us like being, you know, all these mandates, but these are by law.
Yes, ma'am.
In this act, that, you know, the legislature has voted on, and, you know, again, the locals, you know, are not given too much say-so.
There's no leeway.
So we have to follow the law. Yeah, so.
And you'll see that with all of our policy updates this time, all of them are based on some act that was passed in the 24 legislative sessions.
So they're mandated to us. Thank you.
Mrs. Harris? I'm sorry.
I would feel better if we took what we redacted and we put it with the co-curricular. I think it's, for me, I would feel much better if we were very specific that home-school students are not going to be part of these other activities, because I would want, I would hate for someone to argue that they are extracurricular, and we don't have them somehow defined as not. Because previously, in our policy, they were defined under extracurricular, and somebody may come back on us and say, well, they used to be defined as extracurricular, now they're not anywhere, so if they were previously extracurricular and you don't define them as co-curricular, then aren't they extracurricular? then aren't they extracurricular? I just don't want us, and not, I mean, I don't know that we're going to have a whole bunch of people utilizing these policies, but I would hate for us to get into a space where we're now having homeschool students coming into things that are in the middle of our academic day.
Honestly, that's a very good point. You know, that, why don't you give us a latitude? We can move these things that occurred during the school day, activities during the school day, and give them as examples of co-curricular activities that would not fall under the purview of extracurricular, which would make it a little clearer. So if y'all are agreeable, we can work on that, make that adjustment and bring it back at the regular board meeting.
I have something to add, but I do, as I was pointing at, I do agree with that. But I'm also thinking like cheerleading is an extracurricular activity, but if I make the cheerleading squad, I can't be a part of the pep rally.
That's correct.
So will that homeschool child be penalized for not being a part of the pep rally? So like, you know.
It won't be penalized as to be able to cheer at the extracurricular activities.
Penalized by not receiving a letter?
No, not getting the merit because you didn't participate in all the activities.
Yeah, like you wouldn't get your jacket or your letter.
Your letter.
Right.
Okay.
That's a good point, too.
So do we need to amend any of this or?
I think if we would take IDE and send it to the full board without a recommendation and let us come back and clear that language up a little bit.
Mrs. Jackson, do you want to change your motion without a recommendation?
Would y'all withdraw that then? Or do it, send it without a recommendation to the full board?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we send IDE to the full board without a recommendation.
Seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Cast your vote.
I got to make sure I do this right. Motion passes to four, six, how many is that? Two, four, six, seven, yea, one nay. Mr. Campbell.
I think it's eight.
It's eight, huh? I'm counting wrong. It's eight because we moved it. So eight, four, one nay vote for Mr. Campbell. Okay.
Mr. Morales, let's go on to Act 337, JDD, 4.9.
4.9, JDD suspension. So again, this is an updated policy to our suspension policy based on Act 337, which also, if you look underneath at 4.10, is what changed in the placement at the alternative school as well. So I'm going to go over that one now. Act 337 added provisions to include that students in grades six through 12 who are suspended for the third time within the same school year for any offense excluding dress code or tardiness shall be placed at the alternative school. So that is an addition to JDD and it is in the packet in the revised section as well.
Also move that we send this to the full board as approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Dysart, seconded by Mrs. Jackson. Mr. Long.
The, is this, does this line up with our current policy, Doris?
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
Technically speaking, according to the law, it was on a fourth suspension. Some, a student was expelled or in our case, recommended for the alternative school. Our, you know, our procedures, let's put it that way, have been that we work with, we had worked with the student extensively not to impose and get to a fourth suspension. It may have been 10 or 15 incidents or things they could have warranted where we were a little more lenient as we interpreted that. What the state legislature has done now has caused a lot of talk, if you can say. Ms. Lichardi is sitting there nodding her head because we've had to have really in-depth discussions with our school people. It's using the word "shall," it says. Third incident, they shall be expelled. Now, in our case, we do not put expulsion on the child's record. We send them to the alternative school and if they're, you know, complete and successfully complete the program, we don't put an expulsion on their record. I mean, that's what we've been doing. So we are working through it. We're talking with our administrators and our students to tell them that, you know, this is, these policies are in effect, the policies are much tougher, we're expecting behavior to improve, but according to state law, this is what we are supposed to do. So is it a change? You may see more of our kids in that pathway. We're going to be trying to intervene more, trying to work with kids and parents to understand that there are certain behaviors they cannot do in school. I mean, there's just no excuse for.
So we have to make a change, though, in our.
We have to make a change.
Code of conduct, correct?
We really don't have to make a change in the code of conduct.
No.
We have to do it in the enforcement of the code of conduct.
Okay.
So if the incident warrants suspension and then removal to the alternative school, we're supposed to go ahead and apply that. Now, our administrators are really good about working with the kids. I mean, we don't suspend kids, contrary to what some people might believe, we don't suspend kids for nothing. I mean, the behavior is, has to be a severe behavior to warrant an out-of-school suspension. So it's not changing our student, our guide to student conduct, it may be changing our approach to it a little bit more.
Okay. So basically, this says we must do this.
The law says "shall."
We have to follow state law.
The law says "shall."
So to me, that's a, that's a change.
Well, it's a change.
Maybe I'm looking at it wrong.
It's a change in our enforcement, yes.
Okay. So we're not going to change the wording then?
It won't change our policy, but it'll change the enforcement.
We're not going to change the wording of our policy?
We're changing the wording of our policy.
Okay.
Okay, and what we're doing, and we're not changing the guide to student conduct because it does outline what offenses will warrant a suspension.
Okay.
Now, it is at the discretion of the school administrator and they go, bend over backwards working with kids. Now, if it is a violent act, if it is a fight, if it is anything in that nature, no, then that's cut and dry. And kids and parents and families have to understand that. You know, if, if there's going to be an act on a school campus that might injure someone, if there is a fight, then that's going to be an automatic suspension. And if you follow this procedure, then it will be a placement at the alternative school. And that we will definitely not bend on. We will make those recommendations.
Okay.
If a student maybe skips school or skips a class or does something like that, while that could be a suspendable offense, it might result in more of a detention or Saturday school or something other than a real suspension, which then would necessitate movement.
Okay, I get you now. You're saying the administration may, may look at the offense differently.
Possibly.
Based on what could happen to the child.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Rodney, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry. I kind of drifted off. So like Mr. Long said about the change in the word, words, are we going to start using, are we going to start expelling or we're still going to be placing it into an alternative setting?
We're going to place it onto an alternative setting until some court tells us because we're in that process right now, that we have to, you know, expel a student. I truly believe that the core of my being, that these are still kids and when they make mistakes and there are consequences to be paid. I mean, and I guess I'll go off on a tangent, you know, I believe that sometimes institutions enable bad behavior and that consequences aren't enough to deter that behavior. That if we can work together as a family and a community in making sure that kids experience appropriate consequences in a protected school environment, we're going to help those kids more later in life. But I do believe they should be able to make mistakes and not have those follow them forever. So if we can't avoid putting an expulsion on a child's permanent record, I would like to see that continue and happen. That we would place them in an alternative setting, work with that child, get them back into the regular school environment so that when maybe they grow up immature a little, that that's not going to follow them. So until some court tells us we have to change it, I would be opposed to changing the way we do it now.
I totally agree with that.
Life's full of comebacks.
Yeah, everybody deserves to make mistakes and come back.
So any other questions on 4.9? Motion?
I think we have a motion.
Oh.
I don't know. Do we have a motion, Ms. Bertha? Yes, we do. You're right.
Cast your vote.
Motion passes nine, zero.
4.10, Mr. Morales.
4.10 is JDE, it's placement at the alternative school. Again, based on the same act, Act 337, and you'll see that Act 337 has the same, some of the same language, right, that we just talked about under suspension. So I'm going to go over that real quick. It says, "Act 337 added provisions that include that students in grades six through 12 who are suspended for the third time within the same school year for any offense excluding dress code or tardiness shall be placed at the alternative school." Now, it also has some additions. So in addition, the language addressing mandatory placements for firearms, knives, and controlled substances has been consolidated to state that for students of grade six through 12, any student found guilty of, in possession of a firearm, a knife with a blade equal to, or in excess of two and a half inches in length, or any illegal narcotic drug or controlled substance on school property, on a school bus, or at a school-sponsored event shall be placed at the alternative school for a minimum period of four complete school semesters. Now, again, a lot of this language is already in there, they just struck out a lot, I know it looks like a lot of red, but what they did was consolidate that language. Students in grades six through 12 may also be recommended for placement at the alternative school if found guilty of being in possession of tobacco, alcohol, or vaping products on school property, a school bus, or any school-sponsored event. So a lot of the same language, but then a lot of consolidated language based on our old policy and what the new act says.
See, the old one put an age. It said a child 16 years older, older would be removed for four complete semesters. So to toughen the rule, they brought it down, didn't do an age limit, did a grade. So now, any child in grade six through 12, any middle school child that would bring any kind of a firearm, a knife with a blade greater than two and a half inches, or drugs of any type at schools, buses, sponsored activities, must be, shall be removed for four complete semesters.
Two years?
Two years.
Yep.
Now, I do have, it says, "However, the superintendent may modify the length of the minimum required on a case-by-case basis provided such modification is in writing that's in the statute." But in order to do that, if it's a drug-related offense, they have to show evidence of participating in a program. For example, at Raleigh, we give parents the option, and we've been doing that, some of that already in terms of modification. We'll place them at Raleigh, if they participate in the program that we have at Raleigh, the drug prevention program and their, or drug testing and screening, and they come out with the clean screenings and they're successful in the program, then we will return them to the school setting with less time. But now it's modified in the law that this has to be done.
Two years.
Two years, but I can modify it if they participate in those types of programs.
Okay. Any questions on 4.10?
I have a question.
Mrs. Rodney?
Is there a reason why the knife has to be a certain belief yet or why it can't just be a knife?
It's in the law, two and a half, because some kids will bring like a little pocket knife to school.
Okay.
And it's like, well, you know, and it's not really perceived to be a weapon, they, I don't know, they forget, they go camping or whatever they do and they bring something. But so that what they've done, and this has been in the law for a while, if it's, they've made two and a half inches as the, I guess, the goal standard. Greater than two and a half inches, it's considered a weapon, less than two and a half inches, it may not be. So we have discretion at that point.
So if something happens with the pocket knife, then they can hold it to actually be used, right?
Right, we would have a "may" instead of a "shall" if it's less than, you know.
Any other questions?
We have a little more discretion if it's less than.
I'll motion to send this to the board with approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. We have a motion by Mrs. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Rodney. Cast your vote.
Motion passes nine, zero.
4.11.
4.11.
Yes, sir. JBE, which is dealing with truancy, it is an updated policy as well, based on Act 386. Act 386 now requires parents of truant students to ensure that their children make up any missed work. Student, excuse me, schoolwork can be made up by attending after-school tutoring sessions, weekend makeup classes, or other remediation opportunities as determined by the school board until the student has caught up with his or her schoolwork. Parents are required to attend meetings at the school at least monthly until the student makes up all missed work. Parents are also required to attend any assistance affair conducted by the school district that provides information on supports available to families. In addition, the act also allows for penalties such as monetary fines, imprisonment, or court-ordered counseling, and allows the principal or designated to note any concerns that school personnel have relative to the child's attendance on the back of any supplemental security income form received by the school relative to that child. They're trying to hold truant kids and parents more accountable. And if you read the act, a lot of this wording that I have for you here comes straight from the act.
I do want to say that we do have a program with the district attorney's office where we identify kids who are truant, they work with us. It is a long process, I can tell you that, but we have had a few cases that have actually been brought before judge. In fact, we had one last week, I think, right, Ms. Lichardi?
We had two last week, I think.
What?
We had two last week.
We had two last week, so we're pursuing that. So if the parent does not make sure the child is in school, then we go through the process with the DA's office, we have the programs, we try to get them to come, and if the child still continues to be truant, then we take them, the DA's office works with us, takes them before judge for additional considerations. So we're doing everything in our power to get the kids to be in school every day, especially elementary level. That's a parent's, you know, responsibility.
Also move that we accept the truancy policy.
Motion by Mrs. Dysart, seconded by Mr. Long. Cast your vote.
Motion passes nine, zero.
4.12.
So 4.12 is JCDAE, student use of electronic devices. And again, this is an updated version of our policy based on Act 313. So Act 313 added language to the revised statute 17239 that forbids possession of electronic communication device on a student's person during the instructional day. Now, that, if you look at the update to our actual policy, it does say, no student shall possess on his or her person electronic communication device throughout the instructional day. Then it says if a student brings an electronic communication device in any public elementary school building or grounds, therefore, during the instructional day, that electronic device shall be either turned off or properly stowed away for the duration of the instructional day or prohibited from being turned on and used during the instructional day. So again, I wanted to give a little bit of clarity of what the actual policy says because the summary was somewhat misleading, but if you actually read the policy, they ask for it to be turned off and stowed away during the instructional day. ask for it to be turned off and stowed away during the instructional day.
Questions?
I have one question.
Mrs. Harris.
Do we include lunch as part of the instructional day?
Go ahead, Ms. Lichardi, because we've been having, she's up there chomping at the bit. We've been having discussions with, school systems throughout the state are doing things differently.
Very good.
Some are being very restrictive, and interpreting that as meaning lunchtime as well. Others are not. Others are allowing usage anytime outside of the classroom. And we are working with our administrators and kids, why don't you give them a little bit of an update?
So the students are not allowed to have it on during the school day, and if they have it on, we're taking it away from them, and the parent has to come to go. So that's, yes. So they, they can have it in their bag, hidden in their pocket, turned off, but when they take it out, we're taking it away, all throughout the day.
So if we see it, we ask for it. Now, that's going to cause some confrontations with kids, but this is the law now, at this point. And I think parents have to understand that if a child is bringing a cell phone with them, or a watch, smartwatch with them to school, if they, if we see it during the day, then we by law are supposed to remove it. So this child is supposed to give it up at that point. Now, what we're trying to do then, is we're going to call the parent and say, "You need to come." The first time, we may give it back to the child. The second time, we call the parent and say, "You must," at the end of the day, "You must come and pick it up, and we have to have a discussion about it." And we're hoping that we're going to get that cooperation from the kids, and from the parents especially.
And the consequences escalate if they keep doing it. So the first time, the parent comes and gets it, second time, the parent will have to come and get it, and they'll have detention, or, and a Saturday detention, and a suspension. So the consequence escalates if the kid and the student keeps doing the same fraction.
Mr. Long? Uh, let's see. You know, in the past, when, when, when fights break out, the kids pop those phones out, and they start recording, you know. What do you do then? Do you take the phone away from them while they're recording, or?
If it gets to that point, yes, we, if we see it, and we are, we're able to do it, we will take the phone. They're not supposed to have them out in use during the school day. Now, is it a simple thing to enforce? No, it is not. I'm not going to lie and say that. It's going to be an easy thing to do, but we are going to attempt to do it, and we're asking for parent cooperation in making sure that they explain to their kids, they cannot do these things, and they are going to be in the wrong if they do it. And the parent has to understand, and hopefully will not try to make excuses for the child.
And if, if the parents don't cooperate, then we can actually move further, where actually taking the phones in the morning, and putting them in pouches, or whatever it is? And, I mean, some school systems have done that, correct?
Some have, and they have found, unless you're in a, a small school, or a rural area sometimes, where there's more support for that, it works, it works fine in some of those settings. The larger school systems, and some communities find that as much more difficult to enforce.
I can understand.
And, or, again, I keep using the word "parents." I'm hoping that parents understand and explain to their kids that they cannot do this, and cooperate, and help us curb that kind of behavior. And then if we, and, and, you know, this coupled with the change in the policy about four suspensions, or three suspensions, and an alternative school, if, if we confiscate, or the child refuses to give us the phone, or whatever, that's going to be an automatic suspension. And if that continues to happen a certain number of times, with all of those refusals, the child will be recommended for the alternative school at that point, at which time their equipment will be confiscated in the beginning of the school day.
Okay, it sounds like a good first step, at least, for now.
And we're hoping that, you know, I think the majority, the majority of the kids will comply, as long as they're all complying. You know, that goes you and your friends, kind of together, if that then becomes the And we're hoping we get support from the families and the community.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Daisault?
And this policy does include, on a public school bus?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we need to also let parents know that.
Sure.
And, and students know that, on a, on a school bus also. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So as of right now, you don't have a definite number of steps before, you know, you catch them with the phone, you ask them to put it in, you don't have it written down like in stone yet, how many offenses before something?
The first time it is confiscated, the parent has to come and get it.
Okay.
And then after that, each school is different, they do a detention, or they do a Saturday detention, or they do a suspended suspension, like they have their own setting.
So each, each school?
But every time, every time it gets more and more severe.
So each school's?
A level, at a different level.
No, middle schools have their own system, and high schools.
Right. It's at a different level.
I'm sorry, I was, I apologize.
Thank you so much.
That's all right.
Any other questions? Motion?
I'll motion to send this forward to the full board with approval.
I have a motion by Mrs. Harris, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
All right. 4.13, JD, is overall discipline. Again, it is updated based on Act 400. So Act 400 revised Louisiana statute 17416, "To prohibit a principal or administrator from prohibiting or discouraging a teacher," excuse me, "from taking disciplinary action, recommending disciplinary action, or completing a form to indicate, excuse me, to initiate disciplinary action against a student who violates school policy or interferes with an orderly education." In addition, principals and administrators cannot retaliate or take any adverse employment action against a teacher who takes appropriate disciplinary action against a student. The act also now states that a teacher shall remove a student from the classroom for disorderly conduct replacing may remove.
Mr. Long? I'll move to approve 4.13, JD, discipline. I have a motion by Mr. Long. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Harris. So we have, is this, is this a, a problem? I mean, do we have the situation occurring a lot, where administrators or principals deter a teacher from?
I don't think so. I'm not aware of any. But it's in state law, and we have to.
I was going to say, a lot of times it happens somewhere else, and it gets pushed down to us as well, so.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
And last but not least, 4.14, JGCE, child abuse. Again, it's an updated policy based on Act 216. Act 216 adds policemen acting as school resource officers to the list of mandatory reporters. It changes, changes have also been made to the reporting procedures, with certain reports to law enforcement now required. A new section addresses that if mandatory reporters are prohibited by an employer's policies for reporting as required by law, the employee shall file a complaint with law enforcement, that no employer can retaliate against an employee who complies with the
Any questions? Just adding, resource officers, if somebody.
Yes, sir. And, and just saying, once again, that reported directly to law enforcement at some point.
Right. I think the biggest change to this, and this is something that we have to really make sure that our employees are aware of, if, as mandatory reporters, if the employee suspects child abuse by a guardian or a caretaker, they are mandated by law to report it to DCFS, and possibly law enforcement, depending upon the severity. If they suspect abuse by any other individual, say another individual on campus, or whatever, they are required to directly report it to law enforcement. There was some concern by some parents statewide, that they were not, employees were not reporting it directly to law enforcement, they were being told by school officials, "Well, you can tell us first, and then we'll investigate and make, you know, make the, the call." Now, I have a little bit of an issue, you know, with this. What we have done in the past is that we have had our employees, you are mandatory reporters, you're required by law to make those reports, we want you to do it. We also want you to tell us, so that we can do our own investigation, and if it's a severe enough thing, if it's something that's happening on, or you think is happening on the school grounds, for the safety of the kid, that we might take an immediate action while investigation is happening. So we've asked our employees, now this, these state policies are basically saying, you can't force your employees to come tell you, because they may feel uneasy telling you, or that it might be, or they might be retaliated against. So what we're telling our employees, we want you to come tell us if you suspect anything, because our common concern is the safety of kids. So we want you to report it to law enforcement, but we also want you to tell us, so that we can take immediate steps, because sometimes those investigations string out, and are not started right away. So, but by law, we have to write the policy, which makes it expressly clear to all of our employees that they are mandatory reporters, and they must report to the appropriate agency if they have or suspect that these things are happening.
Any questions from the board? What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we accept the changes to JGCE, and send this to the board with approval. I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Jackson, a second by Mrs. White. Cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Great job, Mr. Morales, as usual.
Thank y'all, everyone, for your time. Have a good night.
Mrs. Lichardi, thank you. Mrs. Daisault?
Thank you, Mr. Warner. And thank you, Ms. Lichardi, for being with us also tonight, and Mr. Morales. Next item, a superintendent's notes. Ms. Voechek.
Okay, first of all, you know, we opened school, the kids came on Thursday, everything, we're knocking whatever wood is around, seems to be going pretty well. You know, you have your opening of school, little bumps and bruises sometimes that we have to get straightened out, but things are going extremely well. We've gotten a lot of parents appreciative of the app for the bus transportation, so as soon as they knew their child's ID number, and could put it in, they're able to, to trace that. I saw Ms. Tucker today, we were passing one meeting, we were passing kind of in the middle of the meetings, and she told me she was out to ride another bus today, so she's going to be, her goal is to be on every bus, you know, this school year, and to get a feel for it, and to assist the bus driver. So, things are looking really well with that. So I think we're going pretty smoothly. At the actual board meeting, we're going to be giving you the Cognia accreditation report that we did this spring, and Ms. Whitestein will be here to present that, and she did a lot of work on that, leading our team in that effort, and she's going to let, we got like the highest accreditation rating. So, just want to let y'all know that, but she's going to formally present it then at the board meeting. We also wanted to let people know that, since this is a reassessment year, usually we adopt millages in June, but because this is a, every four years, all the property and parishes are reassessed, and those adoptions take place later, once the assessment rolls are approved. So we will be doing that at the September meeting. But I wanted to let you know that we are putting forth the advertisement of a public hearing, which will be at that September meeting, on September 24th, to consider a roll forward of the adopted millages. That will not happen till October, but we will be putting the advertisement in the newspaper, advertising the hearing that's necessary for that consideration. Okay, and with that, I think we've had, you know, a good and productive meeting, and that's about all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Voechek. Mr. Warner?
Can we, uh, they don't have the lawsuit, the hearing schedule, the lawsuit?
For which one? The container terminal?
Yeah.
As, as for, what, what I've learned recently is that it was scheduled for this month, but the court filed a motion to remove the case, just filed it last week, to remove the case from state court, and move it into federal court, and we're awaiting that decision. So in fact, I talked with the assistant DA today about that, and I should have, we should have more information next week, depending upon if the federal court accepts it and moves it into their jurisdiction.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that the little bus deal's going good with the iPad, and you know, maybe, maybe further down the line, when, get all the little bugs worked out, maybe they could, maybe put a little app on there, where you push a little button, and people could maybe look and see when the school, just, when the school board meetings are, and possibly the safety committee meetings. They can just hit a button, and it'll just pop up. Instead of.
Instead of going to the website?
Instead of going through the website. Just, just a thought down the line, to be considered. Thank you so much.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion, Mr. Campbell? Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, and good night.